I'd like to call the Adams County Cultural Council Study Session number four to order. And Melvin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, when you hear your name, say here, present or yay. Joyce Downing.
Here.
Jesse Martinez. Megan Hartline.
Here.
Roberta Ayala. Emily Burr.
Here.
Larry Dunn.
Here.
Erica Hernandez.
Here, and I apologize, my camera is not working for some reason today.
Jim Toll.
Here.
Anne Vega. That concludes our call.
Thank you.
I'm here, it's Roberta Ayala, I apologize, I was a minute late, sorry.
No problem. Next on the agenda is the process confirmation.
I'm sorry, just really fast, just. Melvin Aaron is here, he's having technical difficulties.
Really noted.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Aaron is here, he just is having technical difficulties.
All right, thank you. All right. Um, next is the process confirmation. I will just go ahead and read this before we get started. All council members should have their own flux portal up to follow along. We will not be screen sharing. Discussion will take place for each organization and category applied for, and will be guided by the 2023 rubrics. Study sessions are recorded. Recordings will be available within two business days on the Adams County Cultural Council website. Please be courteous on the virtual platform. This is an open discussion, but we will call on any hands raised. Council members, please keep your cameras on throughout the discussion. Note to the public, study sessions are open to the public for observation only. Organizations will not have the opportunity to comment, so please keep your cameras off and yourselves muted. We will start our study session discussion, and the first organization will be the Rocky Mountain Brass Works British Band. So with that, I will.
Joyce, before you do that, we do have an organization update on the agenda from Dana, and I know we put this on the fourth agenda. Dana, is this something you want to do before the discussion, or is it something you want to do after?
Now, um, I don't remember what that was, and I got to think about it, so I guess let's just move it to the end, so I can jog my memory.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Sorry, Joyce.
Sorry.
All right. So with that, we'll open the discussion concerning Rocky Mountain Brass Works. Am I hearing any discussion? All right, um, with that, maybe I'll just jump into this just a little bit. Um. I really do like the idea when they, the band performs, that they actually sit side by side with the students. I think that is so valuable, you know, with the joint mentoring that they, they do. I really enjoy that. I, I think that's so valuable for the students. I do have a couple other comments, uh, just wondering if the start date is correct. It shows, at least I happened on my notes, that it's of May of this year, and I, I just think that's a typo, I'm just kind of curious about it. And also, um, as far as financials go, the requesting amount of eighteen hundred and twenty dollars, it's not the same as what they have in the budget, so I'm a little curious about that. I think it's a, I'm not sure if it's a typo, or just what's happening with that, so. I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Yeah, I'd echo that, Joyce. Um, and you know, the budgets didn't reconcile as well, so your comments were spot on with what, what I had tracked as well, so thank you for that.
Welcome. Anyone else? You know, I'll just chime in with usually Aaron's has something, you know, when he talks about the longstanding organizations, and this one I just happened to pick up in my notes, that they are the oldest of three remaining traditional brass bands in Colorado, so I think that's pretty awesome. I just had to be Aaron tonight. Is there anyone else?
Just to answer your question, Joyce and Emily, um, so SCFD staff, when we reviewed the grant, we had to amend the request down to eight ninety-one fifty based on their budget, so even though in the grant application, it's eighteen hundred, it had to be amended based on the actual budget, so.
The request.
Right.
I know, you know, I, I looked at it both ways, and I'm going, either way, it's not, it's not going to balance, you know, so the way they have it in the budget, it's balanced, but if you look at the request, the budget's not going to balance, so. Thanks for that, Dana. Okay. Next, we have Rochoney, I believe that's how I pronounce it. With that, I will open up.
It's just, it's Rochoney.
Rochoney, okay, thank you.
Well, can I start with, welcome to Adams County, Rochoney. Uh, and I, I thought that this organization had really impressive fundraising, um, and an even more wonderful program, so I loved how the two different projects addressed different generational needs. Um, each project was really, like, specific and targeted for the audience they were looking to serve. Um, for project two, um, I was looking for more specific dates, specific partners, and specific activities. Um, I just, it, it sounded like it was a little bit in development, and I was looking for a little more specificity. But I'm super excited about these, um, two projects.
Absolutely. Anyone else? I, you know what, I, I really appreciated.
I see a hand from Aaron.
Oh, Aaron, all right, all right, okay.
Sorry, I'm having so many technical difficulties today. I'm going to blame it on the weather, but anyway, I'm here now. Um, how, so this is a question more for SCFD than anything else, so, um, I know of this group, um, and, uh, I'm just not sure how to address concerns. I'm just not sure how to address concerns. So what is sort of typical for that? Um, if we run into something that we've had sort of experience with in the past, and we like, you know, I'm just not sure how to address that.
Well, Aaron, I will say this, Rochoney is a new group. Um, we did the eligibility process with them um, in the fall, and going over everything, including board notes, I mean, the whole vetting process, we did not find any red flags, so I would say if there is something, um, I can certainly talk to you offline about it. Do you? Is it, I guess my question would be, do you think it has anything that would affect their actual grant application?
Potentially.
Okay.
Um, but I just want to get more clarification on it before I submit this.
Okay, yeah, so I can, I can definitely talk to you, um, offline, maybe even after this meeting, just to maybe clarify some things that I, that I may know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, we will move to the next organization, which is Sajento Baroque Ensemble, and with that, I'll open up the discussion. So, uh, first, I, I noticed that they, their budget didn't match for their project. And then, um, I'm just curious about the schools that they plan to do outreach, because I know they mentioned that on the description, but for the venues, they only have, um, they only have the, oh my god, and my computer is just being so crazy today. So they only have the Northland, um, Arts Center, so, um, just, um, wondering how they um, are planning to target the schools, which schools they're, they're planning to do the outreach, and um, how are they going to be spending their, um, thirteen hundred allocated to the marketing in order to attract the, the, the people, the, of the audience that they want to? Anyone else? Um, I just want to make a little comment. Um, I had the opportunity, actually, when we were in Italy, to hear, um, this type of music played on the traditional, you know, instruments. It was really, really a lot of fun and fabulous, so I just wanted to interject that. Anyone else?
It's certainly, I mean, a niche organization. I, I think their approach to this first project is really interesting to mix two possibly very wide-spanning genres together, um, and involving the kinds of musicians and local performers that they hope to, um. Yeah, I thought it was really exciting, so I applaud them for bringing something that is, um, not expected potentially from an organization like theirs, so thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next organization.
I just want to address Jim's comment in the, in the chat, um, just that, um, I think Dana and, and Aaron will, will discuss, and then um, Dana will be in, in contact if, if needed. So thank you for that, Jim.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the next one, which is Series Fest, and they are requesting funding for one project. So I will open up the discussion. Did I hear? Okay, Megan?
No, I see Larry's hand.
Oh, okay, okay, I don't see that. All right, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, mention how impressed I was with, uh, Series Fest. It's another another, in, in my view, uh, unique approach to education. Just with the way they, the way they're teaching writing and storytelling, and illustration as storytelling, and, and things of this nature, uh, uh, really impressed me, as well as their pointed reach, uh, into Adams County.
Thank you. Um, I did show on our financials that um, it shows an adjustment, but when I look at the organization, actually, it appears it is just the opposite, so am I wrong on that? I, I just kind of it's just slightly below our cap versus above. So just wondering, just to let you guys know, unless I'm doing something wrong here.
Um, we go by fifty percent, so if it was fifty point zero zero one, then we then we go down to fifty percent, so just give you a heads up, we, we don't have a lot of wiggle room when we do our financials, so it's up to the, um, to the council, you know, the twenty-five hundred, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so it's literally two dollars and fifty cents difference, so that's negligible.
Okay, just thought I'd mention that.
I, I didn't do that one.
I, I knew that. All right. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, um, I like this project. I love, um, kind of the engaging with students, and I love, like, the kind of multi-day um, producing a product education. Um, one, and the, this is going to sound like a minor quibble, but I'll wrap around to it. One, one element of the partnership with the library, which I also love, um, I love bringing education for youth to, um, accessible locations. Um, pointed out that it was reaching, um, home-schooled students, alternative schooled students, um, and the way it was framed was like, it was just for those students, and um, I, I wanted to either clarify or advocate that it would engage public school students too, who are in these current times, you know, there's not a lot of arts programming or funding in public schools, and my assumption and belief would be that it was open to all students, and I just wanted to say that, that in the application, I had to read the sentence again and again to try and figure that out.
Okay. Good point. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, we will move to the shady ladies of Central City. I'll open up the discussion. They are asking funding for one project.
I can kick off that. One thing I really appreciated was, um, they described in their EDI section, um, that they were really looking to diversify membership, and they described, like, their hustle in recruiting people at events. Um, and I, I really loved that outreach to their audiences to become engaged in the organization. I thought that that was wonderful. Um, and I also saw lots of great reach in Adams County at lots of different kinds of venues and locations in twenty-twenty-two with more planned for the future. Uh, I thought that was great. Um, one thing that I would love more detail on for future applications, um, would be a little more program description, um, with details about the content, like maybe which characters might be represented. Um, that would just give a clearer picture of what kind of programming they're bringing to Adams County.
Those are good comments. Okay, anyone else? You know, I, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, I just wanted to mention that I, I love their work. I think it's very unique, what they do. And, um, I would also just love to see a little more of the, uh, diversification on their income, as they have a really high dependency on SEFD. It's almost seventy-five percent, so I would definitely love to see some other types of income to continue to, uh, thrive in the, in the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, can I add, please, that, Eric, I appreciate your, your comment in looking at it. Um, their contributed their contributed portion of their grant, seventy-four percent, well, seventy-five percent is SEFD, but if you look at their earned income, that drops down to seventeen percent. So, um, you have to add the earned and the contributed, um, when you're looking at whether they're overly reliant on one source of income, so they're, they're okay from my standpoint.
Perfect.
Thank you so much, Dana. Anyone else?
On that same token, um, groups like this, I think traditionally could, could find, if they wanted to diversify their income a little bit more, that foundation, so we're looking at corporate foundation, SEFD, government, non-SEFD, individual income in terms of it earned. Um, I'd love to encourage them just to start chat with some foundations. It seems like their work is really interesting, and they're integrating really well with schools and things, and there's probably foundational dollars available as well. So just as something as they're going toward next year, um, to encourage them to look at.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move to the next organization, which is Saint Martin's Chamber Choir, and they are also requesting funding for one project. I'll open up the discussion. So I believe, I'll just jump in on this one, that, um, they have actually, uh, they're over the cap um, for their, for our particular Adams County, and so that, that will be adjusted down. And also, I'd like to see which high schools they are planning on performing at. I would really like more of a detail of the venues that they're going to be at. Anyone else?
I'll chime in, um, Joyce. I, this is a great organization. I love what they're doing in the community, especially with, you know, going beyond just school outreach and traditional performances, but also working in, um, senior communities. Um, I think it's also really interesting to see that they make, you know, repeated visits to some schools, um, so that there is more engagement possible, connection with individual students as they're working. Um, I just, I, I appreciate that that is the kind of outreach that they're focused on.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Right, with that, we will move to the next organization, which is Stories on Stage. And they are also requesting funding for just one project, so I will open up the discussion.
I thought this grant did a great job telling their story, and I mean, I mean, that, that's their whole thing. Um, and they told their story really well, the story of the programs and, and what they do. Um, I would love to see if they could find venues in Adams County for any of their programming.
Thank you, yeah, and I put that in my notes too. I do, I really do love what they're doing, but, uh, both of the venues are, you know, in Denver, so I appreciate seeing if they could have some outreach into Adams County. And then I, I'm just having, they did comment that, um, they actually have the virtually as well as in-person, in-person, uh, performances, and I'm just kind of wondering about how many ticketed Adams County residents, um, because we don't really fund virtual, so I was just kind of curious about what the difference would be.
So how does that, how does that work? I know we've talked about this before. But in terms of fund Adams County funding, it just seems, yeah, it seems vague to the point of I'm not, well, I guess they're saying nine percent of the audience. Yeah. Megan, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So, anyone else? All right, I don't see any other, or hear any other comments or hands.
Joyce, Jim had a hand up.
Oh, okay.
I got a comment, Aaron. I mean, because we have not had a lot of discussion or input on that, I will fess up. I've been very parochial about if it's the impact on Adams County, if you're not in, in Adams County, making an impact on Adams County, I don't score you very well. Um, and no one has indicated otherwise, and I figure until I'm told, I can't be parochial about it. I'm parochial about it.
Could use the word parochial. Yeah, and I guess that makes sense. I mean, for folks not familiar with this, who might be watching in the future, we have a whole series of questions that we rank one to ten. Um, and impact on Adams County is one of them. So.
That's true, that is true.
Yeah.
I, uh, I would like to echo Jim's sentiment, especially with regard to the next organization, but I'll stop there.
Okay. So is there any other discussion on this particular organization? All right. Hearing none, then, uh, we'll go ahead and move to Tisaro Foundation, Tisaro, okay? And they're asking for two projects, funding for two projects. With that, I will open up the discussion, and did you want to make a comment, then, Lawrence, about? No?
Sorry, um, yeah, sorry, uh, I was just a little bit, uh, late to the, uh, to the mute trigger there. I, uh, I honestly couldn't find any evidence of uh, question number one for either of these projects in, uh, in my reading of this application. Because they the, the program that they are hoping to get Adams County money for is in Jefferson County, and uh, unlike other organizations that I have read, when that is the case, they try to take a measure of the Adams County residents uh, that, you know, that frequent their program uh, in their county, and they often, um, they often indicate some particular outreach to, uh, to Adams County citizens if they want to draw them to their particular program in their county. This organization did neither of those things. So to, uh, like I said, to echo Jim's sentiment earlier, I couldn't find any impact, uh, uh, of this organization in Adams County.
Aaron has his hands up. And then Dana.
Erin?
Great. Um, I mean, they do to, to Larry's point, I mean, they do mention that they're going to advertise to Adams County using pretty broad strokes, um, social media platforms, local newspapers, and I think it could be as simple as, maybe in the future, getting a little bit more specific. Are you doing targeted ads just to Adams County residents? Are you going through Adams County publications, that sort of stuff? I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Larry, but, um, just in terms of critical feedback, I think yeah, getting specific about tracking residents, um, I think the idea of, I mean, obviously, all seven counties have folks that will probably attend, attend the pow-wow. I mean, that makes sense, um, in, in a state that, well, yeah, we don't read land use, uh, acknowledgements at the beginning of these meetings, but, um, many folks do, and there were a lot of tribes in the area, um, so yeah, I think maybe just getting specific about how and why for us, so that way, when we're reading it, we get a real clear picture of why, why Adams County dollars um, should go toward these events. I think the event itself is great, um, and super important, um, but to Larry's, Lawrence's point, maybe a little more specificity in terms of outreach.
Yeah, um, yeah, to that, I, 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 I am not, uh, disparaging the organization or the event in any way, shape, or form, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, I, you know, I, I, I don't want to get parochial either about, uh, about, um, grading these, these things, but, you know, I look to the, uh, I look to the, to the criteria we were given uh, about how these organizations should answer these questions, and, and I judge accordingly, so that's that's, that's, that was my impression of what I saw, that's all I'm saying.
Dana, did, did I hear that you were going to say something, or? Okay.
That is correct, thank you. Um, I just wanted to point out to the council that, um, when organizations, when they submit, um, their application, they, before that, they have to submit a final grant report, in which case they report on, um, the county of residents that their attendees are coming from. So I have the number, um, for their county-specific attendance from last year, and it was three hundred and sixty-four attendees, or five point two two percent of their overall attendance. So they are getting Adams County residents, it's just not as apparent in the grant application, because the grant application deals with where the location of the activity. because the grant application deals with where the location of the activity and how many people come to that activity. So you're not going to get a full picture of how many Adams County residents are actually served because some of those numbers could have other counties mixed in. So if you ever are wondering, please reach out to me. I'm happy to share with you any information that may help you in that regard. Thanks.
Thank you, Dana.
And I just want to comment in, in the narrative, I kind of picked up on the, they are partnering, partnering with Adams County 12 Schools in the events. And students are actually demonstrating and performing some of the dances and doing some other activities. So I just want to comment with that. So. Emily?
Thank you. I, Dana, thanks for, for mentioning that. I think it's hard, you know, applicants don't necessarily see other applications. So they don't know how everyone else is approaching it. And we've had, we, we see a lot of diversity in what people include in that anticipated attendees section or even within the description of the project. So I think, I mean, it's helpful if they have to eventually provide the population that they're reaching and they're, they're applying for project year in and year out, or similar project year in and year out. There, there is a way that they could potentially provide that kind of demographic centric information. So I, I would encourage, again, applicants to be as thorough as possible. As I've said before in other sessions, you know, the more details that we have about what you're doing and how you're reaching Adams County, the better for us. Then we make a really informed decision. So I would encourage all applicants to do that, all organizations to do that.
Thanks, Emily.
Anyone else?
Could, here's a question for this, for this group specifically, because why not? I'm seeing that they, they do talk about their Adams 12 Schools. They are allowed to apply for multiple, well, I guess they're, they're already applying for two projects and operational funds. But the educational outreach into Adams County, I feel like might be a really nice fundable opportunity in terms of one of the two projects. So. And with that, I will, I will stop on this group. I think that, I think that's great.
Thanks, Erin. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move to the next organization, the Catamots. And I believe they are requesting funding for one project. And with that, I'll open up the discussion.
Dana, I have a question about this one. I have worked with them in the past. I do not currently work with them. And I'm not on their board. How, what do you think in terms, what should I do in terms of recusing? I don't know. I feel like I can make an informed decision, but I just want to be upfront and honest about that.
I appreciate that. So if you don't have any leadership or any type of board or other type of hands-on affiliation with them. And if you, you've engaged with them in the past, and as long as you feel that you can make a unbiased decision with their grant, then you're fine.
Great. Then I'll start off the conversation. I love this group. I think they're clever as heck. They really pivot well. And seeing the kinds of projects that they do in terms of really being clever and engaging. I really like this group a lot.
I really like this group and I really like this project. How could my librarian heart not love this project? But even, even with that, like lens, I really love that it's a long-running immersive performance that gets the community talking. Like there are so many opportunities versus a one-time event that like the community can like be like, oh, have you gone to see this? Well, you still can. There's still an opportunity. And they really can because it's in such an accessible location. There's so many time and date options. And there's free admission and all the accessibility. I just love how this is designed to get as many people as possible in this experience.
And I just want to comment with the first thing that, about this whole grant was the title. It intrigued me immediately. I wanted to read it. I mean, you know, it was kind of like, oh, my gosh. I mean, it just seemed like, it just drew me in immediately. You know, so I, I just loved it. I, I love partnership with all the different venues that they have, including anything. You know, so I, I just really enjoyed it also. But I just went, I actually wrote down, I love the title, you know, so. You had your hand up and I, I don't know, you pulled it down, but I didn't know you wanted to say a few words. I'm sorry for cutting you off, Larry. Larry, did you want to say something?
Well, I, about this organization, the Catamots, the, the whole idea of, of immersive theater is what got me. If anyone has ever experienced Sleep No More, it, you know, just the description of what they were doing reminded me of that. So I'd, I'd like to get a couple of tickets one of these days, maybe.
And say, I want to be in the test audience. This thing is just too good.
Amanda, if you're listening, you've got some test audience members. I really enjoy the fact that they're, that they branch out more. I know I said, you know, they go to different locations with their different shows, which I think is great. But they're not just, I know they, they started in the Boulder area and they are really making concerted efforts. We've mentioned it a couple of times. Could you think about Adams County? And I'm sure all the other counties say the exact same thing. And so folks who are getting clever about how to really engage on Adams County soil, I think is, is really, is really wonderful to see and encourage more folks to, to do that.
Anyone else? All right. So we'll move to the next project, which is the Denver Brass. And they are requesting funding for one project. I'll open up the discussion.
So I, I love the complimentary tickets and the outreach to care facilities. I think that that's a really good way to reach people and connect with them. My one comment I wrote down was that the project feels a little diffuse. It really feels like just funding the whole thing, all the things, everything. Which is fine. It just, it just doesn't feel like a clear cohesive project to me. That said, I love outreach and maybe if it could just be a little more clearly described, like what the outcomes of this outreach and project are, that might make this more effective and cohesive.
All right. So I will just comment that I did appreciate the fact that they have outreach to all areas of Adams County, even the furthest most, which would be Bennett. So I really appreciated that intentional outreach for them. And I really thought they had very good collaboration with not only SCFD organizations, but also non-SCFD.
I, another organization I love, I know many of the performers personally. But I, this is, in reading their application over a couple of years, I feel like they, they have heard our comments and I feel like their application was, I'm going to say more complete, and I don't mean it that the previous ones weren't. But it was just really thorough and depth. Everything I felt like was intentional and thoughtful. They, they've really grown over the years since 1981. I mean, it's a performing organization, then they added these extra arms that, that go out into the community and reach people in lots of different ways. And I, I, I really appreciated the application from start to finish. And however, I will say, I do agree with, with Megan that the, the project could zero in just a smidge more and I think would be even more impactful.
Anyone else?
This is Megan again. I can follow. And I, I think that there were elements that they really.
We're back and we're good. I hope you remember where you left off, Megan. Mid-sentence.
Yeah, I was like, wait, what was I saying? How far did I get?
I won't know that until I start to splice it together.
There should be a warning, like we're going to run out of disk space.
It used to be videotape. He just ran out of tape. I think I just aged myself a little bit.
Or broken in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Melvin, are we recording? We're good, yes. Sorry, I'm recording now. So I feel like I have, I took away the hosting power, but we're all good. So please, Megan, continue the conversation. All right, Megan.
Yeah, so I was going to bounce off of Emily's comment and say, again, I love all the activities and some of the things that they mention in the project when they're like, not asking for funding, just want you to know. I think, I think I would clarify, we would love to see two projects. That I think would help clarify what the, the kind of goals and aims and specifics of the, the activities are. So love the projects, love the work. That's my end comment.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right. Hearing none, we will move to the Urban Farm. And they are requesting funding for one project. So I'll open up the discussion.
I don't always want to be first, but I'll dive in.
Go ahead.
I really appreciate some of the examples of demographics of schools that they serve that they shared. I realize that they can't maybe do that for every school and it's, it's hard to always do, but I, I think it helped give a story of who they're serving. And just one side comment I wanted to make. Normally, we say, hey, we would love to see some connection with schools outside the metro area. We would love to see outreach to other areas of Adams County. And this one, I'm not saying that because I really appreciate the point that Urban Farm is connecting folks in urban areas who have minimal access to farming with the farming experience. And then I just wanted to comment overall that I, I really love the thoughtfulness of bringing the farm to schools. Like they're really specific about how they're trying to create an in-depth learning experience and that they have recurring programming for deeper impact with hands-on activities. This is just like really well-designed from an educational perspective and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. I'm sorry. I, I, I just wanted to sort of echo some of Megan's comments. I don't know what it is about farms, but I really, you know, like the Denver Urban Garden was one, was one organization that I really admire their approach, their approach to education. And they are, they, they're targeting schools as a, as a, as a way to get, get, get the message across, you know, while, while many of these organizations are, are producing future artists or art lovers and art appreciators. Organizations like this are producing people who are going to grow our food. And we're going to need that more than, we're going to need that a lot more than ever.
Okay. Any other comments? And you're on mute and I just, I just think it's really funny because I know your mug says you're on mute.
Yep.
Yeah.
I use it for Zoom meetings. Thank you. I just want to say, I really enjoyed in their narrative, they're talking about DEIA. The way that they talked about how they're, they're going about, you know, you, they used they used their statistics, they're talking about ways they're actively leveraging partnerships, which I think is a really clever use of resources. A lot of organizations are in collaboration with each other, right? So they were mentioning that they're, they're working with, they're working with the city and therefore get to leverage for some of the trainings that the city, DEIA trainings that the city provides. I just think that shows a little, that shows a real smart, clever way of leveraging potentially limited resources. And it helps me read between the lines a little bit for this organization, which is a good thing. So they did a really great job in their narrative of, of helping me understand what was going on. So kudos to them.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we will move to the next organization, which is Think 360 Arts. So they are asking funding for one project. So I'll open up the discussion.
I think, like, I like the idea of the social, social emotional, like, learning for kids through the arts. And this has made me think a lot more about how programs like this are super important because of like the attack on those kinds of ideologies and our current situation in this country. Like, this work is just really important. And so I appreciated that about it.
Pardon me, what organization are we discussing?
Think 360.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
I love this organization and I love the support that they give to teachers and to learners. I really love their, their clarity of what they're doing here. And my one wishlist item is I would love to see any outreach to schools farther outside the metro area.
Anyone else? All right. We will move to the next organization, which is Tashco. And they are requesting GOS and funding for two projects also. I will open up the discussion with them. So with Tashco, I'll just kind of jump in here a little bit. Just wondering about some of the financials. We did, SCFD did kind of highlight that some of the SCFD funds are in excess of $10,000 or in excess of $10,000 cannot be used for capital expenses. So wondering, when you look at the detailed explanation of expenditures, we don't have a lot of detail. And I think in order to, to address some of the concerns about the financials, we probably need to know exactly what some of these expenditures are versus just having a very versus just having a very generic no comment, uh, you know, in, in the detail. So wondering about about that. And it's, it appears that um, also Tashco is extremely dependent on SCFD, however, they did have actually a surplus. So just wondering about some of, some of these issues in the financial arena.
Just to clarify, Joyce, so when they're talking about because they mentioned that, I mean, in their second project at least, majority funding will go directly to artists and performers, permits. Um, and then in project one, grant budget includes so they're listing items, you're just asking for more specifics in terms of the, the, the financial breakdown, okay?
Right, for the, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. Anyone else have any comments about that or, or anything?
I thought it was really cool that they're offering a pride event, uh, for the first time as an organization and, and new community, so like it.
Anyone else? Okay. Alright. Hearing no comments, we'll go ahead and move to the next organization then. Which, um, I think the next two organizations, um, Thornton Community Band and Thornton Community Choir or Chorus, uh, both of them are uh, just GOS requests, so we really don't have anything to rate them on currently, but I'm just wondering, do we want to have any discussion on either organization? Even though it's just GOS?
Joyce, can I just ask a, maybe somewhat silly question, but why? I guess I'm curious why they just didn't put any project requests forward. I don't know, Dana, maybe you have some light to shed on that. I would encourage them to do that in future years.
You know, and I don't have an answer for that, you know, um, but definitely, you know, if they have something in mind, you know, that they should actually ask for a project also.
I'm, I, I'm kind of in Joyce's boat, I really don't know, I don't have a a really reasonable response.
I know some stuff, but I probably can't talk about it.
Okay, so we can.
Oh, come on, you can't, you can't do that. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
If it's in the grant, you can discuss it, I would say personal opinion has no role.
True.
I'll speak about maybe the community chorus, because I have no conflict there. I think maybe they don't, maybe they don't understand quite. I think they've been asking a lot of, for years, of the other of Tashco. And I think in Thornton, there's been like some confusion. And I've, I've, you know, asked questions about this as I'm learning more about how the grant process works, um, for SCFD, and so I think that they probably could ask for grant for projects, they just probably don't know how to navigate that since like the chorus and the band are like truly all volunteer ran. So these aren't folks that really know how to do a lot of grant writing stuff and they're learning. But considering some things that they've asked for from Tashco, like, that could definitely probably be something they explore. Is that, is that okay to say that?
I think so.
Okay. I would just like to add that in the past couple of years, they've only applied for GOS funding, so this isn't the first. It seems like a, their standard approach.
But, you know, just to add on to that, maybe since I, you know, it's the Tashco group or, you know, it could reach out to them, you know.
No, this is super helpful for me because I think I'm gonna talk to folks because there have been requests to us for funding. So like I think folks need to figure out the grant process a little bit better, all around.
And it could be since, like you said, it's all volunteer, it's a little more difficult to navigate. So I think that's kind of out of our reach as far as the cultural council goes. Yeah.
Yeah, they need to get support with that kind of work.
Yeah. Alright.
And Aaron and then Dana.
Go ahead.
Alright.
Darn it, darn it. Because I don't write grants for SCFD, um, or SCFD grants. Uh, does the council offer opportunities, I'm assuming classes, workshops throughout the year, that sort of stuff to help guide folks? Is that something that SCFD as an org does? No, I'm seeing a shake of head, no.
We're a funder, so um, our capacity with just six employees, well, now seven, is we're strictly a funder, but we do try to have on occasion workshops for organizations, but it's basically on how to do the grant, not necessarily on how to look for other funders.
That's what I meant, is just specifically for SCFD, if there was a resource or a guide or something, I know, for example, this council, we've, we've got some video resources and things that have been recorded over time that have been approved by SCFD staff. Just, just something to think about in terms of access to the grant. Just an interesting topic.
Well, we always, from a, from a team perspective, we always encourage organizations, if they have any questions or you know, want to talk about ideas or where there's a need in our communities, they can certainly reach out to me and I can discuss it with them, and then if it makes sense, direct them, you know, to, to a member of the council, so that door is always open.
Dana, were you finished with your?
Yeah, I thought about kind of what I said. Erin, I might have just jumped the gun, and so I guess to directly answer your question, SCFD staff is here to assist organizations if they have questions, but we don't guide them on how to fill out the application.
Understood, thank you.
Alright.
But they could come, oh, just, just a curiosity, because I would probably help some of these folks that I just talked to at some point. They could like, like you said, Zoe, they could come to you guys and ask, like, or just get feedback for ideas, is that correct?
As far as the department goes.
Okay, yeah, the department.
But it's separate from the cul- but it's separate from the cultural council, yeah.
Awesome, okay, good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
And something that I just-
Oh, there, sorry, I keep doing it, it's like, I think there might be a delay. But I was just gonna say, there are resources on the tier three that walk you through the different elements of the grant, what's needed, I mean, there's actually an exhaustive list of resources, I think, to, uh, how to fill out an SCFD grant, so that is definitely something. Even though you may not have courses or workshops, you have a lot of tutorials.
Okay.
Um, I did want to kind of, I guess, inquire about the comment that Roberta made on this particular organization asking, asking Tashco for funding. Because I want to be very clear in, in doing, um, I don't want to do the organization a disservice, so when you say that they come to you asking for funds, are they asking for funds to do a program, in other words, a program fee, or they're coming as a for you all to give them a contribution without any type of service or anything gained from it, just like you're a funder of them?
Yeah, I've been having like a lot of conversations about this with like city staff and stuff, because I think everybody's like super confused, and I talked to you a little bit about it too, um. So like, I know like we got a request for like instruments, and that's cool, but like you know, we have projects as Tashco that we're doing, that y'all looked at, and like and then we're also like working on fundraising this year, so we can diversify our revenue streams, so we, as a group, are kind of confused of like okay, then are we raising money to give it to the band then and not do projects for that Tashco wants to do, so it's just been kind of like a little bit of a weird situation. But like, knowing that this is an issue here, it might be an opportunity for them to explore like how they can get funding for some of these things they need. Or want, or want to do, if that makes sense. And it might just be crafting that grant, that's what I'm thinking in my head, but I don't know for sure.
So that just raises a little bit of concern for me as far as the, the, the funding that you are, if you have actually funded some of their projects or some of their requests, is that coming from city money, or is that SCFD money, or just exactly where is that funding coming from?
Yeah, that's a good question, like, and I have looked at like budgets and things, and like, I know that we're using all the SCFD money and we get matches from the city. Oh, I think it's our arts and cul-, it could be some of our arts and culture budget too. Um, that we have, that's like part of like the department. But those are good questions, like, we do look at the budget and and then like there are times that there's like money left over and it goes back into general fund, so like, it's kind of it's kind of confusing. But yeah, we've had concerns about this for quite a while, I'll just say that.
So, so I have just one other question then, because you said if there is remaining funds, it goes back in the general fund, is that SCFD money that's going back?
No, it, it shouldn't be, no. Usually that all gets spent.
How does that, how is that tracked? I'm, I'm serious, I mean, how?
I know, I don't like, it's it's, um, I, I mean, I don't have a, a budget in front of me, so.
Can I actually cut this short, because we have, it's basically an interview, and so we're not allowed, you're not to, you're not allowed to answer questions on behalf of the organization.
Thank you, Dana, okay.
Joyce, if we want to, um, if we want, if the council wants, because it really affects decision-making, then we may have to ask the council to send the organization um, a question and allow them time to answer that, but to be fair to all organizations, we can't have the back and forth between the-
Thanks, Dana, you know, it just prompted so many questions, I just-
I get it, but yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, you know, and we'll move on. Alright, is there any other discussion about GOS for either organization? Alright, so hearing none, we'll move then next, to the next organization, which is Vintage Theater Production. And they are asking for, funding for one project. So with that, I will open up the discussion.
Larry?
Uh, I have a question on this, uh, particular organization. Reading in the, uh, reading in the, uh, financial summary. I see that it says two venues listed for Douglas County project are in Castle Rock outside SCFD. How, how does that happen?
Uh, Larry, say your question.
Uh, how is Castle Rock, which I believe is the seat of Douglas County outside of SCFD?
So, um, Castle Rock and Larkspur opted out of the SCFD, the, in other words, their voters didn't approve it, so they don't, they don't do sales and use tax there, so they opted out. Um, I think they are discussing that now, uh, uh, and try to have they can get back in the SCFD. Um, or come into the SCFD, I should say, but that won't happen to reauthorization, so any activities that happen in Larkspur or Castle Rock, um, cannot be funded with SCFD funds.
Gotcha.
Alright, anyone else?
Yeah, I'll say, um, I was curious, um, about attendance numbers, um, but it looks like there were no Adams County events in 2022, according to the attendance sheet, I was um, I'll be curious and looking out for 2023 numbers next year. Um, and I was really excited to see this come to Bennett.
Aaron?
Yeah, um, I, I really like this group, um, mostly because they're, they're a scrappy fun little organization, the amount of productions they do, and the amount of opportunities that they offer. Just as a theater guy, um, the amount of opportunities they offer to a whole variety of, um, actors. And they're really conscious in their, I don't know if anybody looked at their programming, but they're super conscious about diversity, um, in their programming of all sorts, which is, I mean, producing ten show, ten to twelve shows a year is insane. I honestly didn't even know that they had programming in Adams County, so they're right there on that county line, um, on, off of Colfax Avenue. So they're, they're on one side, and on the other side is Adams County. So really close relationship with Adams County, and it's cool to see them, um, to, to echo Megan. Um, going to Bennett and other places, because they are in a super urban environment, so that, that shows some due diligence on their part, it's really great.
I totally agree with your comments, both of your comments. And it just appears to me they have very strong collaboration, you know, with that art district over there, so, and-
Yeah, they're, they're good players in the field, for sure.
Yeah. I'm just kind of curious about, um, the theater for the young audiences, I'd like to know a little bit more about that. It piqued my interest. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the Westminster Community Artist Series, and I, they are asking for GOS and for two projects. So I'll open up the discussion. So, I believe actually for both projects, it appears that they have, their request is over the cap. So, uh, the request will be, um, adjusted appropriately. And this is just my little thing that I bring up once in a while, but, um, it just, it, it feels to me like, uh, these projects that maybe you have more than one project in a request. Uh, you know, so, um, actually both, in, in both projects, it feels like on the one, that there was seven venues that could be standalone projects, requests, versus incorporating them in, in one. That was my, my general feeling. And it's not that I don't appreciate what they offer, I do, you know, but I just think maybe, um, more detail, you know, and, and just picking out one or you know, we, because we offer two projects, you know, funding for two projects, and it just feels like we're actually asking for funding for more than two projects in these particular brands. I don't know, you know, and I noticed in the 2022 activities, and, and then I did a little more research, but Jefferson County had like thirty thousand attendees, but then I realized it was July 4th, and you know, some of those type of things. You know, but it just kind of jumped out me, at me that, you know, we were, um, our attendees were only, um, just close to six thousand versus thirty thousand, so that made me a little nervous there for a minute, you know, so.
How, how do the more, sorry, I didn't raise my hand, I apologize. Um, how do the more seasoned folks on this council approach that, right? So if you've got I mean, it's not, it's not like one concert that's being taken to eight different venues, it is, or seven, sorry. It is seven activities under one project grant request, and they do seem to be separate, how? In terms of the questionnaire, I'm not entirely sure how to reflect that.
You know, and, and for me. It's, it's difficult, more than anything else, you know, to try to figure out, because we don't really address that in our rubric at all, um. But maybe, you know, and this might be. A conversation for our retreat, you know, how to address. The approach, because it's just not one organization, but there are several. That are actually. I call it creative writing for the, for the projects. And so maybe we need to have that discussion to see just exactly what we want to do with it, you know, but. As, but it does impact for me personally. Um. Because our guidelines are, the, the requests are, you know, requesting for two projects, it impacts my rating. You know, so, but everybody is individual in how they, they handle it.
I can, I can speak to. Kind of where I think about this, which is. Um, in our specific rubric, um. If. The less cohesive a project is, the more I wonder if it's achievable, the number three rating.
Okay.
So, so sometimes when there's like a multi-part. Thing that's like really clearly defined, like concert, 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 different artists, but like, here's our promotion plan, here's the venue, you know, like. If it's cohesive, I find it achievable.
Mm-hmm. That's a good way to look at it, yes, thank you.
And I'll just note that it is part of our list to discuss at the retreat, is how we define projects, or if you want. We'll discuss it.
But I think this is a good topic to bring to our retreat, for sure.
Actually, to be honest with you, council, um, SEBD does define what a project is, and it has a beginning and a start, a beginning and an end. Um, with a specific project, so it is discussed, and I'll, I'll have to find it, I'll actually put in the chat. Um, but we do define what a project is.
Okay.
Well, and so does Adams County, so does the cultural council, it's defined in our rubric, so it could be that we. Want to further define that. Or say something along the lines of projects that. Or applications that have. Multiple projects. Under one umbrella will be X, Y, Z.
So again, I think this is probably a good topic for the retreat. You know, I really do. Anyone else?
Well, I will second that, that is a good topic. And it's, I would also add. It, I would hope it would be addressed before people are thrown in the deep end of the pool and say, here's your scorecard, go at it.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Anyone else? Hearing none. We will move to the next organization, which is, wow, Children's Museum. Okay, that'll open up the discussion, for they are asking funding for two projects.
Um, so this organization offers really lovely learning opportunities, um, and they were very clear and specific in describing them, and I. Just got a great picture of what they have to offer, and that was really well-written. One question that I had, this might be a reading comprehension issue, because I was going through it at night, but I had to read it again and again. It was not super clear to me what Project One encompasses. It seems to me that it's, um. Helping to support regular museum visits. Um. And, and I was just looking, like, I, I wanted more clarity as a reader on that.
Anyone else? I'd second that comment, Megan, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. We will move to. Young Voices of Colorado, and they are asking funding for two projects. So I will open up the discussion. So maybe I'll just jump in to begin with, and again, I just, uh, appreciate the outreach to the Bennett High School. Um, I think, you know, anytime we can have any organization, uh, go further east, I think that. Is great, you know, for. Um, our Adams County. And I love the idea of the all-day immersion, uh, you know, I think it's very valuable for our students, I just really like, um. What they're offering.
Yeah, L State Project One particularly made my heart sing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I really loved it, and I, I love what this is doing. One, one question that I ended up having, that I think could be clarified in future applications. Um, they mentioned a couple of times about thirty-five dollar tuition that's waived. What's, what's not crystal clear to me is whether that tuition is still charged, or whether. The application is saying that SCFD support waives that tuition for attendees.
Wow. Okay.
Which, if that is the case, and attendees are able to attend for free with support, would help. Me want to support this even more.
Yes. Okay. Anyone else?
I do think it's nice, though, to have, sorry, I didn't raise my hand again, I do think it's nice to have dollars signs attached, at least for me, right? And understanding from, it, it helps me. Get a clear picture that this group has an understanding of the cost involved, um. Which I think is, again, just, it's just reassuring, and when you're talking about. Reading through an application, we get one shot at this, like Emily's talked about before. We're going through eighty of these, or however many, in a few weeks, um, it, it's a lot, and so. So those little nuggets help us. Um, those little, those little Easter eggs help us sort of get a, a broader picture of the organization. On a personal night note, choir, youth choirs, it's where I started, I, I grew up in a rural town in Ohio, um. The YMCA Youth Choir, um, because it was free, um, my parents could get me out of the house on a Saturday morning. Um, and I, I just think that these kinds of group activities where you're, you're really helping kids come together. They've got a shared method of communication, which in this case is music, they're learning how to communicate sometimes, even without. Um, I'm, I'm a SAP. Uh, not to put that on you, Megan, but I'm also a SAP, um, for these kinds of projects. Um, so anytime that you're working with kids and you can really, um. Give us examples, and some groups have even put in quotes from students and things like that, just really encouraging groups that work with students to. To, you know, especially if they got a longer history, you know, where did some of these students end up, all, all these details really help to, um. Gives a broader picture of your, of your organization, and I'm a fan of youth choruses, man.
Great. Anyone else? All right. With that.
Sorry, Joyce.
Yes.
Uh. I, yeah, piling on in the SAP, um. Train here tonight, yeah, I totally agree, um. I would say. In the second project, maybe it's just because I know about this, and I would suggest it, not everybody knows the method of Kodai. And so I think it could have benefited this. Just a, just a sentence or two, what is the Kodai method, and how does that benefit? A child's educational experience and eventual outcomes, um. I think you get a little piece of that, but they could have, they could have given us more, that would have just said, oh. This is multifaceted, they're coming away with more than just singing and learning and, and being with others, uh, so. Just, uh, I guess soapbox kind of thing, it was a great application.
It was, but I appreciated it, because I noted that myself and actually did some research on that, because I am not familiar with that terminology, you know, so.
Yeah. Good, good for you.
Yeah, yeah. So. Anyone else? All right. That was our last organization for this particular season. Um, and just again, thank you, thank you, all the organizations for submitting, you know, your grants, and we really appreciate them, and we love all of them. You know, so we do have questions sometimes, but that's okay. Um, with that, um. Dana, or is it Zoe that has some, uh, Adams County updates, or?
I just have a couple of things, um, thank you all for. Everything that you've done, and thank you all to the organizations for serving Adams County. Your scores are due Monday. So please have them entered, um, by the end of the day, we need to move really quickly on. Powering all of them and putting it all into the funding spreadsheet. Uh, and then our next meeting, the council meeting, where we will propose the funding. To you will be Thursday, May eighteenth, and that will be in person, I know we had talked about it being virtual, but we, we have landed on it being in person, so. It will be here, um, and we'll send you information about that, but please make sure that it's in your calendar, so. Thank you all, and Dana, do you have a few words?
I have a couple of things, but Erin, can you check your chat, um, just check your chat, I, I sent you something directly. Um, I cancel, uh, I just want to let you all know that the SEFD, um, Board of Directors approved the funding plans, I sent. I sent it to Zoe and copied Joyce on it, it's great news, there's a lot of money. Um, so you have a very hard decision, very, very difficult, difficult. Couple of months coming up, trying to decide, decide on how to, you know, to use it. Um, and then I also wanted to let you know, Emily, are you still going to be the Adams County rep for? The, um, oh gosh, the district wide, the, oh wait, hold on, sorry, the, it'll come, hold on, I'm just looking. Um. That Subcommittee for the Evaluation Criteria Document.
Yes, I would love to do it, I mean, assuming the dates and work, but yes, I'm still very interested.
So for all the new people, uh, there was a chairs and liaison meeting last, oh gosh, June. And Joyce and Zoe represented, uh, Adams County, and there was discussion about. Every county's so different, and there's so many different rubrics. So how could we, as, as an organization, as an SCFD? Tier three organization, make it more simple for all the applicants, so one of the, um, one of the suggestions was, should we look at a common rubric? Um, so now that SCFD has done, um, our equity statement, we hired a, a firm, the Equity Project, to help us with a lot of our EIDA. Um, initiatives and looking at our grants, and that's for all three tiers, not just tier three. And so we finally have gotten to the point of where the Equity Project will work with this particular. Subcommittee, which is one representative from each cultural council. Um, to move forward with coming up with some ideas, and hopefully have something that we can present at the, either the retreat or maybe before then. So that's kind of where we are, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's probably some questions that I didn't cover right now, but, um, if you have questions, just let me know, you can either, we can either talk about it now, or. You can email me. Joyce, did you want to have any, did you want to add anything to that based on the meeting from last year, if you recall it?
Dana, I think you really did cover it, you know, we're just anxious to, you know, get this task force started, you know, it, uh, so it'll be very welcome, yeah. But everybody that was at the meeting, uh, agreed that we needed something, you know, uniform.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have so many different counties, everything from Boulder to Douglas County to Adams County, they're all very different, so. So we have our work cut out first, Emily, so you will get an email from me, and that is all I have to report, so.
Awesome.
So at least you were kind to Emily, we, you know, during grant reading time. So with that, I, I just want to say thank you to the council, I know this is a lot of work, a lot of reading. And, you know, it really takes. A lot of attention, I mean, it, it's just hard work, you know, you do, you know, going through almost eighty grants, and it's such a short amount of time. Um, I just want to thank you each and every one of you, and I know it's been kind of difficult for some of the newer people, and you had great questions. And it was a, a good refresher and, and mind jogger for me too on some of them, so. Again, thank you for all your hard work during this particular grant season, thank you so, so much.
I've learned quite a lot on this, uh, in, in, in this process, and I, I look forward to continuing.
Great.
I'm glad you joined us, Larry.
Yes, absolutely.
Be here, glad you talked me into it.
All right, with that. I will see you soon, and thank you again, and we are adjourned, thank you, bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.